Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We called to order this special session of the Randolph County Board of Commissioners, and our specific purpose tonight is to take care of official budget business for Randolph County for the fiscal year 2022 to 2023. Some of you have sat through all of these meetings, and I think with some experience to say this, it's the hardest budget session and the most work and time that's been put into a budget that we've worked on. And those of you that have followed the process, there's a reason for that. Coming off of the pandemic and inflation and gas prices, all those things that go along with it, and issues with law enforcement, issues with hiring and retention in law enforcement in particular, our emergency management positions, 911 operators has really been a focus for us through this process. Tonight, we will adopt that budget. We will set some fees in particular for our health department. We will set the tax rates for our special school districts for the city of Ashboro and Randolph County and Archdale Trinity area. And we will adopt a budget and set the property tax rate for Randolph County for next year. We have, as I said, been focused on issues related to the pandemic and the work that's involved. I mentioned one night, it's not just about the general budget, but it's the American Recovery Plan Act funds that we have. We use those. It's our strategic planning money that's a part of this process, and we've taken some from all three of those areas to try to get a budget, put together as best we can to address the issues. And I do think that this budget addresses some serious issues and needs that we've had that's been building up over the last two or three years. As always, there's some things that are not funded, things that folks, it's not recommended in the budget so far, that might be in a pet project, but I think some of our special programs, you will be pleased with that. And we again welcome you for this process as we go through it. I do want to mention, we just got a text about five minutes ago, Commissioner Kidd will not make our meeting tonight. Doesn't have any explanation, business related, I assume, but he will not be in attendance for our meeting tonight. You will hear in this process, the first time that we have gone through this budget process, under the new state rules that will not allow a member of this Board of County Commissioners to vote on a budget for a board that they sit on. In particular, I sit on the Board of Economic Development here in the county. That's not a county agency, so I'll have to recuse myself from that. Commissioner Allen sits on the Sandhills Mental Health Board. That's not a county agency either. Commissioner Kidd sits on Family Crisis Center, but he's not here, but you'll see us go through that process tonight to recuse ourselves. That will include any discussion that might take place on that particular budget item as well as the vote itself. And then, once we are recused in that vote, when we vote on the full budget, we will not have voted on those items, on those areas in which we sit. So that's a first for us. As usual, probably one county, somewhere in North Carolina, had a problem, and so they put in a law and rallied to affect all 100 counties and how all these several thousand county commissioners have to conduct their meetings. So we didn't request it, but somebody did, and somebody in the General Assembly took up the calls and had a bill passed that put these rules into place. So again, thank you, and we will get started at this time. First of all, we have some house cleaning to do for the current year, 2122, some year-end budget adjustments that we have to make to close out this year. So I'm going to turn that over to our Finance Officer, Will Massey, to take us through that process.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What we've got is a few budget amendments on some pass-through phones, and we just want to make sure that we've got enough expenditure budget to cover any collections that we have so that we can pass it on through correctly. The first is occupancy tax collections. We've got an additional $400,000 that we'll go ahead and budget. That money will come, whatever does come will go straight to the TDA. The next one is temporary receipts. We've gotten several distributions this year. Sometimes it's only one, but this time it's, I think we've gotten three. But just an $833 distribution we got in the last few weeks, so we want to split that up based on student enrollment for the city and county schools. The third one is fire district taxes. Those are coming in a little stronger than what we had originally budgeted, so we just want to make sure we can make those distributions to the fire districts. That's $200,000. And then the school districts tax fund was $100,000 for additional taxes that may come through, but this gives us that flexibility to remit whatever does come in.
Can we vote on all these together?
If you choose to.
Anyone have a question of Will on these issues? Do I have a motion to approve the budget amendments?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the budget, the closeout budget amendments for fiscal year 2122.
Thank you.
All four of them.
Have a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Who, my, I heard both of them.
Max had the second. David had the motion. Further discussion or questions?
I guess those temporary receipts, that'll, do we need to make changes to the rest of the budget since that's going to the school?
For the $833? We can let that...
Thank you for being accurate there.
Don't rush out and spend that all at one place. We'll take every dollar we can get, folks. All right. Those in favor will say aye. Aye opposed no, and the budget amendments are approved. The next item is our capital improvement plan. We don't have anything that affects the budget right now. We have been, the board's been involved, I think most of you are aware, that Representative Alan McNeil got some money for what we've routinely referred to as our Ag Center. I think it's Farm, Food, and Family. And Randolph Electric has made a no-interest loan...
Low-interest.
Low-interest loan of $4 million toward that project.
Passing through from the USDA.
USDA through Randolph Electric. We'll have a public hearing probably in our August meeting to deal with the receipt to that, but that'll give us another sum of money to put towards that project. We're getting close to our bogey, I think, on that process. So now we have our school taxes and our fire tax districts. We have, first is Archdale Trinity supplemental school tax, and on behalf of that, that's where I got my public start, was on that board. I make a motion that we approve their supplemental tax at the current rate of .09, 9.22 cents. That's the same rate they've had for two, three years. So I make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the supplemental school tax for Archdale Trinity. I will tell you all, out of interest, that is not, today that would not be approved, but it went into place back in the mid-sixties and it's grandfathered in, just for those schools in the Archdale Trinity area. Further discussion? Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed no, and it's approved. Next is the Ashboro City School supplemental tax at their current existing rate of 14.39 cents. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed no, and it's approved. Next is our fire district rates, and on our, I think it's headed cheat sheet, it says approve fire department tax rates as proposed or as follows. Our history here has been to approve separately those fire tax districts that are asking for an increase. And this year, we have two. Climax is requesting to go from 15 cents to 17.63 cents. That's an increase of 2.63 cents. Do I have a motion on that request?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a comment and make a motion. I appreciate Climax being the first to step out, based on all the work that we've done the last three months and some of the confusion that's occurred amongst the cap as far as the 15 cents goes. But I do want, and I have not heard any from the Climax area, any of the taxpayers there, any negative feedback from them, but I do want to caution the folks over in Climax. Chief McGee, you do a good job, but it needs to be pointed out, this tax rate's 18% above anybody else in the county. And it is actually the third, you have the third highest expense in the county. So I know you run a good department, but we need to make sure that we run it efficiently and continue to run it efficiently. I know that that's in the area with Guilford, where they have 17, it's the same basically tax rate, but I don't, Guilford County indicating what we need to do. So I'm hesitant to raise the tax, but I have not heard anything from any of the taxpayers there, so I'm assuming they're good with the fire service and the protection they're getting. So I'll make the motion that we approve the tax rate for Climax at .1763.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Further discussion? Thank you for the comments, David. Any other discussion or questions? Those in favor of the increase will vote aye.
Aye.
Aye and opposed no, and it's approved. The second request for an increase comes from the Farmer Fire District who's requesting to go from 9.2 cents to 12 cents, which is an increase of 2.8 cents. What's the pleasure of the board?
Well, since I live there, I guess it's my turn. Farmer Fire Department runs itself efficiently, obviously one of the lowest rates in the county, if not the lowest rate, I suppose. And I know Tracy's sitting out there somewhere and sweating, and I want him to sweat, but you know, it's a low rate, they do a good job, and from that standpoint, I make the motion that we approve the increase.
I'll second the motion. Further discussion or questions? Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Aye and opposed no, and it's approved. So we have voted on the two departments that have asked for an increase. We will now take on the remainder of the fire departments, who are all requesting to remain where they are, and we can take those as a group. Is there a motion to approve the remaining fire rates?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we retain the fire rates as presented in the sheet with no changes on the remaining departments.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Further discussion on these? Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed no, and they are approved. Our next item is our fees. There are no changes on building and electrical plumbing permit fees, there are no changes on emergency services fees, there are no fees for planning and zoning changes. There are some changes on public health. Those have been in your agenda for tonight. There was also a handout, there are several fees that are included. I don't know what all of them are. A lot of them are for vaccinations. Any of these related to COVID? Tara?
We did add an administrative fee to administer COVID vaccine. To date, we've not charged anything. We can't charge anything for the vaccine anyway, but the administrative fee was the only thing we added.
Are you still busy giving shots?
Not very much. It's really dropped off.
All right.
In fact, I got an email today that StarMed is going to be closing...
Yes.
Its Randolph County locations the end of the month.
This Friday.
This Friday.
Yeah, we are in the recovery phase of the pandemic.
Thank you, Lord.
Yes. So as part of that, you know, the money's running out, so the state is starting to pull back some of the services. So like Hope is talking about, the StarMed services for testing and vaccine, which have been available for nearly two years now, will be phasing out this Friday. So the testing sites at RCC, Archdale, and Ashboro, and First United Methodist Church will cease on Friday.
And I'd just like to say a thank you to the members of the Department of Public Health for leadership during a challenging time period and helping to get us where we are now.
Thank you. Any other fee questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we'd point out several of them went down. They weren't all increased.
Right.
It's a...
Yep. The first, the first, I see the preventive visit for ages 40 to 64 went down from 409 to 300. Very first one is, is it going, the first three are all down?
Yeah, we compare our fees to neighboring health departments, to area providers. We look at our Medicaid reimbursement fee. We need to charge at least what Medicaid can reimburse us, and we try to remain competitive without putting ourselves out of business.
All right. Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions on these or take, entertain a motion to approve the fee changes for public health?
I'll make a motion to approve the fee schedules as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Further discussion or questions? Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed no, and they are approved. Okay, folks, we have three agencies. First one is Randolph County Economic Development Corporation. I would like to ask this board to recuse me from discussion or any action on the funding for this board, and I would like to turn the gavel over to Commissioner Allen to go through, lead us through this process.
So you make that as a form of motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Been moving the second that Chairman Frye recused himself. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. So the EDC, well now, you told me to be prepared, and I'm not. EDC was 400 and...
367.
Oh, it's in front?
367.
Oh, it's in the motion. Well, that's nice. I should have read there. The motion would be, the appropriation is 367,950. We did have a public hearing on that last Monday, so is there any discussion or motion to approve the appropriation to the Randolph Corporation?
Were you asking?
Well, yeah.
I was just saying, I'm sorry. I was thinking about what a good return we get on that investment. They do such a good job at economic development. So I will make a motion to approve the RCEDC appropriation of 367,950. Three hundred, yeah.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I will say that's a 10% increase, but all the EDC's funded primarily by the county and all of the other municipalities, and the other municipalities have been asked to increase their giving, their contribution by that same 10%. So we're in line with everybody else. Any other discussion? Not? All those in favor of the motion? Let it be known, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries three to zero. Mr. Chairman, I'll take the next one. I will, since I'm on the Sandhill Center Board, I'll ask that this board recuse me from voting on the Sandhill Center appropriation.
And you're making that as a motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed no, and Commissioner Allen is recused. This has to do with the budget for the Sandhill Center, which as I said earlier, is not a county agency. We used to have a mental health agency, and we, by our population base, had to go to a larger LME, and I think we couldn't, having to pick a partner, we couldn't have, could not have picked a better one. I served on it at the outset initially, Harold Holmes followed me, and now Commissioner Allen is our representative on that board. And the request is that approve their appropriation of 844,000. That's the same number it's been for, I think, about 10 years now. They are well managed and use the money well, so that is the issue before this board. Is there a motion on the funding for Sandhill Center?
I'll make that motion.
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
Second. Further discussion or questions? Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed no, and it is approved. The next one is...
You can actually just go ahead and approve that with the remainder of the budget because Kenny's not here.
Yeah, we don't need to take that out.
Mm-mm.
That's what I'm saying.
Right, right.
No, because Kid is not here, so that will be a part of just the regular budget process when we get to the full county budget. So that takes us to a discussion of the manager's proposed budget for 2022, '23. We have had some discussions. We've been filtering those issues back to Will and to Hal. We individually have sat down with them to discuss these issues. Each commissioner has, we have some issues that we have, I guess, been more supportive of over the years. As anybody that's followed this process knows, that mine's been education, and I've always supported the funding. That's not to bore you, but that's how I got started in this process. The budget, the capital outlay budget for Randolph County Schools, in the 1981-82 budget was $300,000. And they appointed a committee to tell the school board how to divide $300,000 among 22 campuses. I was on that board. Linda Petty was on that committee. Don Osborne was on that committee. Phyllis Lawrence was on that committee, and a gentleman by the name of John Parks, who lived down in Seagrove and worked for the local radio station. We were members of that committee, and I wound up on this board, and all four of those folks wound up on the Board of Education. Linda Petty and Don Osborne became chairs of that Board of Education. So a lot of history that goes into it, and it's been different issues. And of course, wanting to hold the tax rate where it is, and some of these were requests, of course, that we heard during the budget process and previous meetings. The recommendation is to approve the funding, to take over the Ramseur Library. That's a total of 158,879. There were two positions in the Juvenile Day Reporting Center, which is actually taking that expense down. We've got some existing salary credits there. Reclassifications, 23,432. As you know, this budget proposes a 5% across-the-board cost of living for all county employees. We also, what's already in the budget, put $500,000 to be used for merit pay, to be divided among Sheriff's Department, Emergency Management, Department of Social Services, Department of Public Health. And that should tell you, those are the folks who bore the brunt of the pandemic and the issues that they faced. A lot of folks don't know in particular Social Service, well, all of them. They had to go. It didn't matter who was in the home, it didn't matter what risk they took, they had to go. They had to be in court, they had to deal with families, they had to go make arrests, they had to take people to the hospital, all kinds of issues. They bore the brunt of that process. So already in this budget is, and that's, that money comes from the American Recovery Plan money, that we moved into the county budget in order to give those four departments the merit pay. In addition to that, we recommended another 2% pay increase for the Sheriff Department and for Emergency Management. That's a total of 492,902. We are proposing to increase current expense funds for the two school systems. As you know, we have to fund current expense on a per student or ADM basis. In recent years past, well, most years, that advantage went to the Ashboro City School System in the percentage. This year, that swung back to the county. So we play off of the county's budget and then make the appropriate additional funding to the Ashboro City Schools based on their ADM percentage of the total. So that adds another 677,290 to the Randolph County Schools, an additional 193,710 to the Ashboro City Schools. That's a total of 871,000, and we're adding an additional 100,000 in current capital to both... And we're adding an additional one hundred thousand dollars in current capital to both school, to both systems. So that's being added, that's two hundred thousand. Funding for Randolph Community College, two hundred and twenty-one thousand one hundred dollars. The Shelter of Hope, um, we actually are taking that off of the county budget and putting it into the Strategic Planning Fund. And we added five thousand dollars. Their request, um, was for, uh, thirty thousand, and we're increasing it by another five thousand dollars. But moving it from the county budget, so it actually reduces the, the revenue needed and putting it where it will be funded with strategic fan, fan, to strategic planning money, which we'll take up after we deal with the budget. And the, um, OE Enterprises, used to be Randolph Vocational Department. We added five thousand dollars. They asked for forty. We recommended thirty, and we're putting back another five thousand in their budget. So thirty-five for theirs. We reduced our budget by five hundred and eighty thousand dollars and not doing a transfer to our water fund this year. So, um, all of that would, uh, take our budget, would increase our budget by two million, two hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars. We're appropriating, um, additional sales tax projections of seven hundred and ninety-six thousand sixty-seven dollars. We've got some restricted governmental dollars, the Ramsour Library fees that, that would be added to this. Interest on investments. And then that would give us a shortage of one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which we're taking from fund balance. We always build fund balance at the end of the year. Our departments do a great job in managing their expenses. So that's where the money comes from to fund these additional, uh, changes to the budget. And the tax rate will remain at sixty-three point two seven cents. It does not change.
Chairman, I'm sorry, I may have, um, written an incorrect number. The, for the Shelter of Hope, they had requested twenty-five thousand, and it's going up to thirty, an additional five on twenty-five thousand.
Yeah.
So the, the new appropriation is thirty.
We've got that, but that, that's moving over to...
Right, right. I, I, I thought you'd said another number, so I was just clarifying.
It go, it goes over at the...
To the strategic planning?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, it does. So, question for discussion? Uh, all the commissioners have, have been a part of this process. We can, it's open for discussion, questions? When you're ready, we, I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget.
Ms. Chairman, I, I think, I hope we're not painting ourselves into a hole here.
Yep.
There's some things in the, uh, the Ramsour Library. We started talking about that probably in January. I see Ross back there, but I think that's probably when that discussion started to get them into a situation where we're, uh, being fair with Ramsour Library versus the other, uh, like libraries. Uh, you know, we might have reconsidered that, uh, due to the timing if we knew, uh, then what we kind of know now. The economy is not, um, with inflation and rising interest rates. Um, you know, there's concern there about, uh, in, in my opinion, is, is what are we going to do next year? Um, a lot of this is, um, you know, we're, we're making these adjustments, uh, and adding in, which I think we have to do for our salaries, for our folks, because, uh, to remain competitive and to make sure we keep folks that we got and retain those and also to recruit, uh, folks and be competitive with other counties, we might have to do that. Yeah, there is a couple of things in there. I, I'm, I don't know that I'm so hot, hot on, but, uh, overall, I think it's a good budget, uh, with the schools. But I would caution us that, um, next year is going to be awfully tough because a lot of these increases, um, some of them are using, uh, the, the merits of one-time ARC monies. We, I think, need to be careful and prepare going forward. As the chairman said, I know that we often, our departments are very frugal in how they spend their monies, and we often run a, a surplus, uh, at the end of the year. But, um, going forward next year, uh, it's, if the sales tax do not, does not come in where we think it's going to, and if we get into, uh, an economic situation where the economy kind of fails a little bit, uh, it's going to be hard to, to reach those sales tax figures, and that's where a good portion of this is coming from. So I, I just want to caution the board and, and caution folks out there as far as expectations goes, that this is a, um, a year in which we funded a lot of the things that are out there that are necessary, but, uh, without increasing taxes, but that's going to be a hard, hard thing to do going forward, uh, next year if the economy, uh, does not continue to grow. Uh, and from what I'm hearing from economic, uh, forecasters, um, you know, it's, it's, uh, we're in for some, maybe some little rougher landing than what a lot of the economists would, would like. So I think we just need to be cautious and careful. And, and, uh, we've had some situations a couple of years ago with COVID. We thought, well, how are we going to make it? And things, um, you know, went much better from a financial standpoint than what we would have considered. But, um, I just caution that we need to, need to be a little bit, uh, as frugal as we can, but I think we have to make these adjustments, uh, especially as far as our salaries goes and funding our schools.
Good comments. We, the state, the State Office of Management Budget had recommended to the counties and, and our association did that, that we budget sales tax receipts about two point eight, two, two point seven. We actually took that to five percent in this process. During the pandemic, that number approached almost fourteen percent. There was a lot of free money floating around, and, um, if you went out to Walmart and Lowe's and those places during that time, you'd have to ride around to find a parking place. And our receipts were, were very good. We, this year, uh, we added money to the Ag Center project, and we, we have paid, as we went, no debt on the North, North Gate, uh, improved some, uh, needed improvement in safety at the courthouse. We paid for other, other expenses that we've had with those additional sales tax, um, monies. So, uh, we, we did, we did take that number up some. Few years ago, the counties were able to get legislation to allow us to collect sales tax off of, uh, online purchases. Used to, you could, if you went to Amazon or those, those hotspots, uh, they charge you sales tax, but the county didn't get it. Well, now we do, and that's, that's hard to, uh, that's hard to estimate because, I don't know, again, during the pandemic, they, the, the most visible vehicle in my neighborhood was the Amazon truck and UPS behind him, so. But at the same time, I think history would say we're, we have a limited risk here, I think, because of, uh, the county, we, you know, we didn't incur debt till we paid off the debt we had. We've always followed that policy. We have a minimum fund balance that we don't go below. We follow our, our, our debt relative to our, basically our net worth, our fund balance, and, uh, do a good job. Will, will keep us straight there. We have good, uh, financial, uh, advice on this board. And, uh, so I think that, uh, that we, we would not have just recklessly, uh, went through this process and put the county at, at a lot of risk. We, we don't do that. But there's still things that, that affect the business of our county, really, that we don't have any control over. So, uh, but I think that this would be, uh, we had requests for thirty-three new positions. We funded fourteen, Will?
Eighteen.
We had a quest, thirty-three new hires, new positions. We funded fourteen of them. So that's, again, not, not jumping out and doing more than, than we feel comfortable in doing. And we did, uh, well, Damon back here, he gets, sixty-six percent of his money comes from somewhere else. So, uh, part, part of his positions are, were paid for in the process, so, um, we, we, we do those kinds of things when, when we put our budget together, so. So that's the proposal before us. Any other comments, other commissioners, or we, we can have a motion? You have the, uh, you have the motion in your, uh, agenda packets there with the final, final county budget when someone's ready to make a motion.
Well, I, I'd make the motion. Uh, I move to adopt the budget ordinance for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, uh, with the changes to set forth. And I set the ad verum tax rate at points, uh, sixty-three point two seven cents for a hundred dollars valuation, which produces a budget of one hundred and fifty-six million, eight hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and nine dollars.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Max. Further discussion or questions? Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. And the budget is adopted, tax rate remains at sixty-three point two seven cents. So we do have, um, one more order of business to, to conduct this evening. And, um, that has to do with, um, the strategic planning money funds. Say again, that the strategic planning process is funded by the revenue that comes to us from Waste Management for their operation of the county landfill. Our contract with Waste Management, um, they had an original upfront payment to the county of three and a half million dollars. That money actually was put into the process that helped pay for some of the land at the mega site. And we get roughly, this one's estimated around one point two one four million dollars. We, we get that, whatever that percentage is, as that, as the landfill grows, every year at the start for twenty years. And we're in year fifteen, something like that, sixteen, whatever. So that money comes into this fund to help, and we, we distribute that around the county, to municipalities, to some nonprofits, et cetera, to, um, to spread that around the county and get as much benefit out of it as we can. So, um, our first item is the Shelter of Hope, and the request is thirty thousand dollars. Uh, actually, their request was for forty. And we have funded it, we are recommending the thirty thousand. Do I have a motion on the Shelter?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we approve the Shelter of Hope, uh, in the amount of thirty thousand dollars using strategic planning funds.
All right. Is there a second? I'll second that. Further discussion? Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose no. And it's approved. The next item is ninety-five thousand dollar request for Emmy's House. That is for capital expenditures. Is there a motion on this, uh, strategic planning monies for Emmy's House? Which is a part of the Family Crisis Center here in the county.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Emmy's House appropriation of ninety-five thousand dollars using strategic planning funds.
Thank you, Hope. I will second that motion. Further discussion or questions? Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose no. And it's approved. Next is an appropriation, a recommendation with strategic planning money that comes to the county from the city of Ashboro. Their original request on this item is for one and a half million dollars to go towards the renovations at McCrory Park. That money, that request was originally, um, came to us for use of ARPA funds. Again, not to belabor this, but we are, um, maybe, I want to say protecting our ARPA funds, and that, with those funds being targeted toward our infrastructure here in the county, primarily water and sewer. We've got several projects there that involve, uh, Randallman, involves Ashboro, Seagrove, for industrial development, uh, in the county. And we did not, we, we did not want to use those funds, uh, towards this. So the city came back and said, split it over three years. We can't commit to three years. We can only commit to this, this one year. But, um, that is the, the, uh, request for strategic planning funds to go towards renovations at McCrory Park. There's been, there's been some questions about, about this matter, but that is the issue, um, before us. So I'm going to see what other commissioners have, have to say on this matter.
Ms. Chair, I, I'm, I guess the, the three-year commitment is kind of what I have concerns about. I've already voiced concerns about, um, budget pressure next year on the, on potential, on the tax rate. And again, these funds are, have been set aside for strategic planning funds, but it doesn't have to be that way. If we, we get in a situation, you know, the choice for me, if we have to have a choice between increasing taxes and, uh, having to do that versus taking the strategic planning funds to balance the budget, I'd take the strategic planning funds. And that's my concern. You know, Ashboro's a good partner, but we also, with the Randolph Health issue there, we've got ten million dollars worth of debt we've got to take care of. We'd love to have some help on that, uh, going forward. I, I'd much rather have a hospital, and I know recreation's important, but, um, we got to have that hospital for economic development, for the well-being of our community. So I, I, I don't know that, uh, I'd be in favor of, of going three years with it, especially in light of what we may be facing in year two and three.
Right. Good point. I, and I want to say, um, this budget that we just passed, it includes one million, one hundred and twenty, pardon me, one million, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the first debt payment on the, on saving our hospital. So that's, and that's going to be here for the next ten years. And the county's paying for all of that. Ashboro doesn't chip in anything. It's all on the county to pay back that money. And that's, as I said, that's included in this budget. So, um, there's, there is a reason for, for some questions and comments there relative to, to this request for the ballpark. And the city of Ashboro also got ARP money. They got their own ARP money. But, uh, that's, that's the, the ask, and that's what's, uh, that's, that's what's on us right now for action.
Well, I got to say that, I guess, of all the people here, I probably go to McCrory Park more than anybody else, I guess, outside of Kenny.
Yeah.
Love baseball.
Me too.
Can't say enough about it. The programs Ashboro Randolph County has are, uh... The programs Ashborough, Randolph County has are, uh, are second to none county-wise. And I guess I've got to say that, you know, I'd like to see us do this to help them out. It would be hard for the city, in my opinion, even with our funds, to be able to do the things they're going to do with McCrory Park. Um, those that have had a chance to go out there and see some of the things that are going on out there, or have gone on out there, and the different, uh, organizations that play out there. Um, you're right, I agree with you, David, that it is a question about a particular area versus county-wide, um, situation. But Randolph County does benefit from that being there.
It brings in tourism.
It brings in tourism. Uh, what I've been told, and I don't have reason to not believe it, is without this park, they would be losing some of the different programs they would, they are now have.
Tournaments, in particular.
And they have to increase this, uh, facility to get it to a level that they've got to have to get more tournaments. And I do know, having been to a lot of these American Legion games that I, I love to go to and see, and the tournaments they've had, they, we get people from out of state to come here and, uh, and be part of our tourism. But not only that, I, and I must admit, I haven't been to some of these college games that come here, but I understand in the early part of the spring, uh, we get college teams who want to come here because up north it's so cold.
Yeah.
They can't play. So, you get some of that, but you're not going to get it if you don't have a facility that, as I understand it, has to be at a certain level, which McCrory Park is not now yet. So, uh, it's damned if you do and damned if you don't.
You'll make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the five-hundred-thousand dollars, uh, for, of strategic planning funds to get to the city of Ashborough for the improvement of McCrory Park.
I will second that motion, and I'll just add, um, it definitely was in need of repair. And, you know, had dirt parking, I mean, it's, it, it needs some fixing up. How much is enough, I don't, I don't have any idea. But, uh, this is our, this is our one-year commitment, uh, if voted accordingly. So, other discussion or questions?
So, this will be revisited next year?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, can we get a little signage out there for the county?
It ought to be on the board.
I think if we're
I agree, I agree.
We're on there, let's, let's get a little, little bang for buck out of it.
There's plenty of signs out there of people who do participate. I agree, I think we ought to have some signage out there. That we do support that.
All right, further comments or discussion? Those in favor will say aye. Aye. Oppose no. And it's approved. Next one is a, um, is a new request, a new venture here in the community. It's generated a lot of conversation and comments. And that's a, a request for a hundred thousand dollars capital funding for Lydia's Place. So, Hope, I know you've been working with those folks.
Uh, yes, since, I mean, I've, I've had some conversations with them early, um, as they, you know, did some early planning. And I think we are very fortunate to have, um, you know, to have a faith-based group in charge that would be willing to get this off the ground, that would have the vision and make that commitment. I don't know if any of you remember, but years ago with Katrina, President Bush said, commented on how valuable it was to have, to be able to have government and other organizations working together with faith-based groups, as he looked at what was accomplished there in that area, uh, with the disaster recovery. And so, I think we are very fortunate for an investment of a hundred thousand dollars to be able to help them get this homeless shelter for women and, and, or families, could be men, but, but for parent and children, to be able to keep them together while they're going through this. I was absolutely shocked to hear the numbers last week and to hear that there were, um, about three-hundred children in this county that are homeless. And that is, was shocking to me. So, um, I absolutely think it's a rare opportunity for us as a county to get something started for our families. Um, and I applaud the members of, um, First United Methodist Church and others in the community who have come together to help get this off the ground. So, if there's no discussion, I'll make a motion.
If, if I might, I want to say that I probably kept quiet about this for years.
Wait a minute, let's, let's have a motion.
Motion first.
Okay, all right, then I'd like to make, uh, a motion to approve the Lydia's Place appropriation of one-hundred thousand dollars using strategic planning funds.
You'll second that?
I'll second that.
All right.
Now?
Well, again, just as an afterthought-type thing, I agree with what you're saying. I've said it for years, we've, we've really needed this facility, this type of facility, uh, to, to, uh, help, uh, those that can't help themselves or couldn't help themselves. I really think this is a great facility and great thing to happen. And I think it's great that we can help with strategic planning funds to, to make this go forward.
I think you got pretty significant contribution from General Assembly too, didn't you?
Oh, for Lydia's Place?
I was told five-hundred thousand.
We're still waiting to hear what that funding is going to be, but that is the number that
I think yeah, I think you're just waiting on them to vote.
Good.
That's what we're hoping.
Yeah. Yeah, I was down there last week for county assembly day, and I was told that. I was on one of my lists to follow up.
Excellent.
Good. Comments, further discussion? Those in favor will say aye. Aye. Oppose no. And it's approved. Thank you. Thank all of you that have Yeah, it is. We have, we have one more, which is another new request and a multi-year request. Request is the Together Works request, which deals with foster children. And has a lot of, um, so, so does our Department of Social Services. They deal with foster, that is, I guess, probably the fastest-growing part of your budget, isn't it, Tracy? Where are you, uh, in terms of expenses and just all the issues related to it? It's a pilot program, there's no history here. We have, we have no, it's not evidence-based at all, um, using our own data. So, that's a request for us. And again, we can't, this, this would be for one year, as I see it now. And I also understand they did not get any state funding. And the budget we were presented was about one-point-two million dollars short of, uh, of being funded. So, that's the issue. The request is two-hundred thousand dollars per year for three years. So, I'll open it up to the, to the board.
I see this, and I've told Hal Johnson this. I see this as a bit of a mega site moment in Randolph County for human services. Because when we made that commitment, I was not on that board all those years ago for the mega site. We put land, we, we made the commitment to buy that land, and we had no clue if anything was coming or not. But we went out there because it was an economic opportunity for us. Well, this is an opportunity for us to get expertise that we do not have in the field of, of, of working with children and families. Our people are working just as hard as they can. When you look at the list of organizations and departments that are in this proposal, all of which we're already funding, though, and they have had input with the Children's Home Society as to what the needs are. And I see all of those leaders working just as hard as they can to make a dent in the problems we're facing with our families disintegrating and children going into foster care. And yet, we go up seventy-two percent. So, they all know what I know, we're missing something. So, I see this as an opportunity for somebody else to work with us, to help us figure out things we can do that are more effective. And if it works, then it's going to save money for everybody in here, everybody here asking for it in terms of our children. It will. And we'll have more physically and mentally healthy children and families. Will it fix it? Never. But will it make it better? That's the plan. And I think it's an opportunity that we have not had before. And when this organization, Children's Home Society, first began to talk about doing something that's been done in Colorado and in South Carolina that is showing itself to be very effective, and they looked at one county to partner with, I started advocating for that county to be Randolph County. And I said, at a meeting one day with the three representatives from the Children's Home Society, I would not sit at this table and advocate for Randolph County if I did not feel very strongly that we have the people and the nonprofits, the government departments to work with you, to collaborate, and to be effective. I wouldn't waste your money. But I'm proud of what we accomplished in Randolph County. I'm proud of it. I'm proud of what we accomplished with the budget that we have. It's not Guilford County, but then again, I'm so glad. So, I have to say, and I'm, I'm probably going out on a limb here, and I know we've never done this. But I'm telling you, if this works, it's going to reduce what we're paying everywhere else. And I think it's worth making this commitment. I think it's worth making it for three years, because you'll just be getting started after one. The data will just be rolling in. The first year, they intend to put forty thousand dollars back in the community. As they look at different things, the, the, the group of partners comes together and decides how to use funds, they intend to put forty thousand dollars back. In year two, they intend to put two-hundred thousand dollars back into our community. And what are we committing to? Two-hundred thousand dollars. In year three, their commitment is to put two-hundred thousand dollars back. I think that's a pretty good return on your money. So, I'm willing to make the motion, and I'm willing to make the commitment for three years. Because I think we just about have to give it three years. And I don't want to be like, nothing personal, the General Assembly getting the lottery started for education. Do we get all that money for education? School board members? No, we don't. But it was sold to us that it would all go back into education. I do not want that to be us unless we're desperate. And I don't see us being desperate with what we have.
Well, you want to make a motion?
I will. Y'all may not support it, but I'm going out there with it. This is, this is, this is, it's Waste Management money. I'm thankful to Waste Man- Management for the money they've spent in this community. And I'd like to ask our county manager to get, um, some information, maybe into the paper, about everything that's been funded through the years through that fund. It's good to get that out in front of our citizens from time to time. I know it's been done before, but, you know, that was another time. And that gets forgotten. So, I'd like for our citizens to realize what's coming from that fund. But yes, I will make a motion to approve the Together Works appropriation of two-hundred thousand dollars per year for three years using strategic planning funds.
Is there a second to that motion? There's a second to the motion? Having none, the motion dies for lack of a second. I, I would just say, they're using our data, so they're telling us what we already know, and
If we already knew it, we'd be working on it. We don't know it, we don't know how to use the data.
Are you telling Tracy she's not working?
I'm, I'm telling her
Valerie over here?
I'm telling them that we don't always know how to use the data. So, we have somebody studying that data for the first time and pulling it all together.
We don't have any proof these folks are going to do it either. They have no track record whatsoever. They could not get any funding from the General Assembly. They're telling us what we already know.
They were asking for about fourteen hundred dollars from the General Assembly.
They were asking for a hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars. And they didn't get it.
Well, they have other funding sources.
And their budget had a one-point-seven, almost a one-point-eight million dollar budget. And the only money they had, the expecting, obviously, is six-hundred thousand dollars from the county. So, they're one-point-two million dollars short and don't know where it's coming from.
Well, they, in the proposal, there is a commitment, not for that full amount, but the goal was to get, to all toll have that. But in their budget proposal, there is a commitment. Oh, yes, from a private funder for SURE, and then an anonymous family foundation. So, for the two that are pending, two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars for SURE to bring to the table.
Is there another motion to be made? And Max, I know you, you sit on the Social Services Board. Your choices also involve
Yeah, that's true. I make a motion, we deny this approval on the fact that I don't think we got all the accurate information we should have to make this kind of commitment.
Is there a second to that motion? I will second the motion. Any other discussion?
Can we table this until we get more information? That's, that would be my request. I know they're doing an assessment, the assessment's not complete. So that's some data there that we, you know, they, they provided some information in summary, but not in detail. And I, in, in my mind, uh, I think we can address this in another, you know, these, these funds are not going to go anywhere that quickly. And I think we can address this rather than denying it. I think we can just, uh, bring it, bring it back in August or September.
It, you know, it, if it's denied, it can be brought back at any time.
But I, but, but when you deny it, it gives it a negative connotation. I don't think we want to give any connotation if we don't have enough information to make a judgment. That's my.
Well, my question is, where are they going to get the other information?
They've done, they've done an assessment.
I know they have.
We haven't, we haven't gotten the results of that assessment yet. Once we get the results of that assessment, that's additional information we could look at.
And.
And decide whether we want to continue down this road to fund it or not fund it.
I understand that. But there's a lot of this, I, I, you know, for me to be able to say, I think it's a good thing. I got a lot, know a lot more than what I've known from their proposal.
Then that's the reason we can table it and wait for more information.
Well, we have a motion to deny the request in a second. Call for a vote on that and then, then we'll go from there. The motion is to deny the request. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no.
No.
All right, motion dies and it's, it's a big issue.
We can progress later.
Let somebody make another motion.
All right, that completes for now our, uh, strategic planning funding issues. And we've been what, we've been sending, streaming this live, uh, tonight, as all, as we always are now. And to all of you in the room and, and those that are at home, thank you for your interest. To our departments, our agencies, thank you for your patience, for your providing all this information to us so we can make good decisions and for the future of our county. And as I said at the very beginning, um, I think some of these are going to be a tremendous help to our county. And, uh, as we go forward, and there's still more, more work to be done. We'll follow our collections, of course, see how, how the funding develops. But for right now, we have a budget and we have some projects. The budget and there's, there's also in that budget, other, uh, we'd say strategic issues, but, uh, outside agencies that we fund, not just, not just through strategic planning. Some of those, Boys and Girls Club, for example, it's been a part of this budget for probably 30 years. And other agencies that we, that we funded, uh, as nonprofits. So, uh, but the strategic planning is, is use that come to us and we have some, um, flexibility there, uh, in, in using those funds. So is there any other business to come before our board tonight? Have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, we are adjourned. Thank all of you for being here tonight, your participation.